Want to speak to.
The Highway Safety Committee met with several folks from Bear Road and surrounding area. And it was a meeting actually prior to that as well. And you know, number one complaint on Bear Road is the fact that the number of people that are speeding on that roadway. And the biggest issue is the Navy Yard traffic going to and from the Navy Yard. That's when the big bulk of the violations are occurring. So the committee looked at the roadway. It's narrow to begin with. There are a number of blind driveways and blind crests. And then you have an intersection of Sligo Road, which is really almost on a blind crest itself. So after hearing all of the information from the folks that lived there and looking at the roadway itself, the committee decided that maybe it's time to reduce the speed limit on Bear Road from 35 to 30 with additional enforcement. So the committee did meet, as I said, September, and we made the recommendation not only for Clement, I mean, excuse me, for Bear Road, but there were a number of other roadways in town that weren't on the current speed limit 30 or 35 zone in town here. So we actually added and recommended that Bear Road, Howell Road, Mechanic Street, Old Indian Hill Road, Peas Lane, Ross Road, Cassettamont Circle, Spruce Street, Stevens Court, Toll Road, and Werwood Street all be put in the speed zone 30 miles per hour as required by state statute. The only repeal is that the current ordinance says that Bear Road is posted at 35 miles an hour. So we'll look forward to repeal that section.
So copies of all the ordinance revisions are available on the table if anybody wants to look at the specific language. I'm going to read the first complaint of the resident on Bear Road who initiated this action. She reiterated this concern to the board via email this morning. "I could no longer walk on Bear Road, and it is hazardous to pull out of our driveway. The traffic along the populated area is going so fast that we are fearful on a daily basis. There have been two dogs killed, one seriously injured. My dog was one of them, and she was on a leash crossing over the roadway to our driveway. I suppose I was lucky not to have been hit myself, but that doesn't make the pain away from watching her die." Take the pain away. "There have been multiple accidents. Luckily, none of them resulting in a death, but it's only a matter of time. The accident this week," it was written in August, "was very serious." Initially written in August. "A young man thought to be doing 70 to 80 miles an hour or more, as witnessed by a neighbor, came over the hill from the Dover side and plowed into an SUV pulling out of Sligo. The gentleman coming from Sligo said he had looked twice, but at the rate of speed the other vehicle was traveling, he pulled out without seeing the car approach over the hill. There were two runners who narrowly avoided being hit and were quite shaken." That's from Karen Steens, who lives on Bear Road. We also heard from Nancy Carmer, her neighbor. Her comment is, "I'm working this evening and cannot attend the public hearing, but wanted to go on record reiterating that I believe 30 miles an hour is appropriate for Route 4 to the base of the hill after the Sligo Road intersection. I think 35 miles an hour is appropriate between the base of the hill and Gulf Road. I have experimented with driving 30 miles an hour on the lower section, and it seems a bit unreasonable, given there are no houses or curb cuts. Enforcement might be a challenge. Thanks again for working on this issue and monitoring the traffic speeds on the road." So with that, those are the two comments we've heard so far. Is there anybody who'd like to ask any questions or comment on how they feel about the proposed revisions?
Hi, I'm Linda Cushing, and I live on Bear Road as well. Karen and Nancy and I have chatted. This basically started years ago when they repaved our road, and the chief had looked into the situation, because I said, "I'm really concerned." The potholes and the condition of the road really kept the road speed down, and we didn't have that. As soon as the road was paved, it's been getting worse and worse. And when the chief did a study this time, I mean, I was shocked when he saw that it was 7,000 cars are going down our road a week. So over the course of time, it's not only the speed, it's the volume of cars that are going. And you've got three or four cars in a row that are coming home from the Navy Yard, and they're flying down that road. So if there's an accident, you've got people right behind you, and they're not going to stop. So it's not only a question of one car. At times, it's a question of multiple cars when you're just looking at the volume. And you know, Miles can attest to that. We've got dogs. We don't even want to walk them on the road down there. We put them in the car and take them to the fields, because that strip is really very dangerous. So anything you can do would be extremely helpful. We appreciate the chief looking into this.
Thank you.
My name is James Cushing. I'm a husband. I live at 95 Bear Road. And the chief did a survey of the speed that the cars were traveling at, and I don't know if you have got a copy of that, but they're outrageous. For a 35 mile an hour zone, they are crazy. Some of them were up to 60 or 65 miles an hour. That's what he clocked in my. You know, someone's going to get killed.
Jason Sergeant, 197 St. Will Circle. So I do transit the road daily to and from. I was actually coming here tonight to make comments similar to the second verse that you had read, where south of Sligo, there's relatively no homes for a long stretch, but if possibly, that can be maintained at 35. And I do understand the road is narrow, especially in the wintertime. It is, you do have to reduce speed, but you know, we should probably be looking at, can we widen the road for safety aspect anyway as a separate item, but what are we going to do about prosecuting people that are going 65 down the road? So I travel it every day. I try to maintain speed limit as best as I can. Couple of times on the downhill after Sligo, I may speed up a little. But I generally have the traffic behind me, because they're the ones, you know, they don't like me, so. But I especially love the ones that come racing up to me and then get right on my bumper.
I'd like to add also that we have a telephone pole on our property. It was hit three times last year, to give you an idea that people are not willing to slow there. Granted, most of it was during the wintertime, but they don't go appropriate speed on that road. They're hitting the pole, and they had to replace it three times. That's just last year. That's not the rest of the years.
Hi, Kyle, I live on Heritage Drive. My husband and I both use that road pretty often, and he said to me last week, he left very early in the morning, and I was in the elderly gentleman out jogging, and in the dip closest to Route 4. And he almost hit him. He was like on the road, and I just swerved out of the way. So as we were talking about it, the second statement that you read seemed to make sense to us as well as slowing it down, especially in the dips and the high parts, and then after Sligo, maybe move it at 35. Okay.
Chief, do you want to talk to that? The reason that you had said, because that was one of the things that came up for discussion in the last meeting, but your thoughts on doing the whole road?
Discussion went on.
The last time we met, we had talked about that as a possibility, 30 in front of the residential areas, and then the fields, leaving it at 35. But your thoughts on doing it consistently was, are people really going to slow down? Was my understanding?
Well, correct. You know, you know, when you have one road that has multiple speed limit changes on it, like Summersworth Road, for example, has two different zones, you know, people get fixated on the highest speed anyway, and they're going to travel that speed. You know, if you look at Tolan Road that goes from downtown Dover all the way up to Route 125 in Barrington, I mean, there are some places where that there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet, and you don't have a house or anything. And that road is about four feet wider than Bear Road. And that is 30 miles an hour the entire length, all the way through Dover and into Barrington. So. Can I just address some numbers that was brought up here?
Certainly.
We put out the stealth radar unit in August for six days, and during the six days, there were almost 7,000 cars that then went up and down Bear Road. The majority of folks are traveling between 36 and 40 miles per hour. So the majority of folks are traveling, you know, between 1 and 5 miles of the speed limit. That was 2,451. The next highest group were the folks traveling between 41 and 45 miles an hour, and that was 1,475 cars. The third group was traveling between 31 and 35, and that was 1292. And then when you get up to 46 to 50, you're talking almost 350 cars. 51 to 55, there were 56 cars. 56 to 60, 16. And then 65 to 61 to 65 were six cars that drove through there during that week, traveling at that speed. So it does tell you that the majority of folks are traveling over the posted speed limit. You know, we've done what we can to do enforcement out there, but I could say out there were five days a week at the exact same time every day, and I'm still going to catch one or two speeders going by, because everybody's speeds nowadays, you know, for the most part. Most of the folks are speeding to and from where they're getting to. And you know, as far as Bear Road is concerned, I mean, that is probably the road in town where we have the most violations and the least amount of enforcement, because it is a side street. It's not a main road, but we certainly try to get out there for the folks as often as we can, so.
Are there any more comments, questions?
Just as a behavior, it takes six to eight weeks to change a person's behavior. If you're going to have two different speed limits on that, those people are not going to be doing both, because they're going to be looking at two different ones. If we want to change the behavior, we need to be consistent. And if you have a consistent behavior, they're just going to do it. Sit and enjoy the road. It's a really nice road. But they use this as a cutoff, so they're going through fast to get, you know, so they don't have to do 236, which takes them out longer. But I think the traffic is only going to get worse. The area is still growing. You've got more people from here going out to Portsmouth and coming back. I think we really need, this is our chance to change it and keep it consistent.
Thank you. The Select Board has these three ordinance revisions listed later on their agenda, where they will deliberate and consider all of your comments and approve those changes or not. The transfer station ordinance is a little different, because that will have to go to TAB meeting. The other two ordinances could get approved tonight or at a following meeting, but should be changed relatively soon. I'm going to close the public hearing on the Bear Road speed change and go on to...
Well, it's all roads, so it's not just there.
Well, you're right. I'm sorry. I do stand corrected. It is a number of roads changing the speed ordinance. Next is the travel restrictions ordinance 14-002, limiting commercial traffic. Chief, did you want to speak to what brought this change about?
Sure. For a couple of years now, we've had folks in town requesting that we limit heavy trucks on some roads. Several years ago, we started with the Bear Road, Pinch Hill, and Sligo Road. So unless they're making a delivery on that roadway to a resident, they're not allowed to travel on those roadways. And those are vehicles 26,000 pounds and higher. And that shows you, that's your large dump trucks, cement trucks, tractor trailer trucks, and things like that. And we still do find people using Bear Road as a shortcut with large vehicles. However, the, you know, the highway folks and others in town has, well, above Clement Road and then some of the other roads that they're using as a cut through, and it was brought to Silver Street and Roberts Road and Rollins Road. But we can't control Silver Street and Rollins Road and Roberts Road, because those are all state roadways. However, we can control the large trucks from using all of the town roads as cut throughs. The way the ordinance is written is not preventing any business in town from driving their large vehicles on any of these side streets unless they're going, unless they have to go from point A to point B directly. For example, a C and J bus can't leave there, go down Foundry, turn up Locust, go down Willy, down to Mechanic Street, then onto Main Street. That does prohibit it. But certainly, he can use, they can use any road in town. Mid-construction can use any road in town, as long as they're using it from going from point A to point B, and no shortcuts. Our biggest part of that is our construction companies from out of town, and the oil trucks and such. So you know, the Highway Department feels also that by reducing or eliminating the large trucks traveling on these roadways, the roads are going to be in tip-top shape much longer than they would be if we continued to allow the trucks to go down. These roads, they really weren't designed for the large trucks to begin with, so that's the reasoning why the committee has recommended that all town roads, not just the three that we have now, that all town roads be prohibited from having commercial vehicles unless that company is making a delivery or a service to a resident on that particular roadway, whether going from point A to point B directly.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any comments or questions about that potential revision? Then we'll close that public hearing and move on to the transfer station ordinance revisions. This was brought about partly because our disposal fees are over budget for what we pay to get rid of the various, the variety of waste that we receive from the residents. And so it caused us to question why that was going on and what we can do about it, but at the same time, the Select Board was receiving a lot of requests from landlords for transfer station permits. So the text is here, if any of you would like to look at all the proposed changes. Some of it is just about updating text. This document regulates who uses the transfer station and how it is to be used, and the rules regarding the transfer station. And so some of the revisions are just about language. Some of it is about updating practices that we no longer partake in, such as burning waste. At one point, we were burning waste, so we got rid of some things like that that just no longer apply. One of the primary revisions of the ordinance is that it did allow for property owners to have a right to have a permit to dispose of waste. One of the revisions would, it gets rid of that word "property owner," so that one can only be a resident. So landlords would no longer have that right. It does speak to the kinds of waste that we receive. It does not include the fee structure. The fee structure is a separate document that is handled separately, which will likely be revised by the board in the upcoming months, but is not part of this at this time. It also enables the Select Board to delegate to me as the town administrator, special exceptions, because whenever there's any kind of ordinance, there's always got to be some kind of process for appeals if somebody feels aggrieved by the rule, or if they feel like an exception should be made. So that was included as well. The placement of the sticker and things like that, that's really the gist of it. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything here. And we did used to have a waste disposal day in Summersworth, but that's now Dover. So just updating in general terms like that. I will take the opportunity to let you know that the transfer station recently purchased scales. One of the reasons that the budget is on track to be over expended for waste is because when people dispose of demolition debris, we charge people by volume, but we are charged by the weight. So we have purchased a set of scales, and the transfer station will be starting to implement the use of the scales to get a sense of what things weigh, so that when somebody comes in with a mattress, for example, right now, that's a set fee. It'll no longer be a set fee, but it'll take the transfer station some time to get a sense of what is the range that one might be charged when disposing of a mattress, because they do vary by, their weight can vary considerably. So that's part of the fee structure change that is likely to be implemented in a number of months. And again, these changes as proposed will not be finalized until the vote of town meeting in March. So this is just a preliminary public hearing. Does anybody have any questions and comments about the proposed changes to the transfer Okay, then. I guess we can leave the public hearing open for, well, you have your meeting is posted as immediately following. So I suppose we can close the public hearing, and if you're ready, we can move on to the regular business portion of the meeting.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you, hearing, but the... This is the transfer station, and this is the agenda for the regular business portion of the meeting, and those are the travel ordinances. And first, order businesses, community input. Is there any community input? Okay, hearing none. Consent calendar contains approval of minutes of October 22nd, and Sligo Road DES wetland permit application, which is right here. I'm just here. Does that run that? Do you think consent calendar?
I'm good with both of them.
Okay, by consensus? All right. All right, please.
About the generator. The folks from Townsend came down to look at the space, and in order to put an in-ground tank and for the new generator for propane, obviously, we'd have to clear out all that area that's there now. However, the stone not large enough, because they don't want to dig too close to the building, because we had that fieldstone foundation, and they might some. So in talking with the folks from Fieldsen, in order to do that, we would think of eliminating one parking space in front of the piddy, the one that's very top there. So we'd have the one parking space where's the handicap, and then that space there, the road would jet out, so it's one lane with a parking space, and the sidewalk would kind of do a kitty corner up to Main Street, so you actually have a wider space between 4 Street and the front steps now. And the tanks would go on the ground there. If we don't want to do that, then the other alternative is to place two large tanks above ground next to the building, which I personally, I don't think, it's going to be an ice horn too. I'd be concerned that, you know, cigarette butts and whatnot, and you're going to be tossed at it, or whatever the case might be. So.
So you're replacing the sidewalk, and that's where they're going to go.
Correct. Instead of the sidewalk coming up straight now, we'd eliminate the last parking space, that's very top, and the road would come up, and it would jet out, and you go over, and then you have that parking space where the sidewalk currently is, and a little bit of space where the flowers are now, to be able to dig a hole and put the propane tanks in there.
Right now, the generator's diesel?
Diesel, yes.
Is there a reason that you want to shift away from that?
Well, we're...
But this is just exploring the options?
Well, propane is cleaner, and propane, less maintenance issues down the road as opposed to diesel generator.
Is propane cheaper than diesel?
It's going to be about the same.
It's about the same. Okay. Diesel's going to go next to your 2020, so it's in January 1st. Anyone that's reading on their oil news, so it's, propane's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you can't put it on the other side of the building then?
No.
Okay, because we don't own that property beyond your, we're heading down towards the red apartment house.
You're talking about right up back here?
Oh, yeah. I'm talking about right up back here. They don't have any...
There's probably 10 feet from the back of this building where the addition is to their driveway, and I don't know exactly where that line is.
Okay.
It's going to be way in the car, by the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and...
And the propane tanks have to be at least 10 feet away from the source, so.
Okay.
So would not fit in existing configuration that we have there now. You know, that, once we do something there, that entire wall is going to be rebuilt anyway, because it's falling apart. It wasn't put together correctly in the first place when it was done. And like I said, like I mentioned last time, all that shrubbery and the trees and whatnot have to come out of there. So whether we would have the Highway Department do that, or whether we'd have, you know, outside source redo the wall, I don't know.
When you say the wall, do you mean the wall that built it?
The retaining wall that goes, that's underneath, along the sidewalk, and it's underneath the generator.
Well, but the sun is in, is that, okay. I don't know how, how does some, how do they fill an in-ground tank? Is there something comes up?
Well, the cap is at, yeah, the cap is at ground level.
It's up above ground.
Just a little bubble.
Okay.
And they open it up, fill it in.
Okay, okay. Actually, they can never refill it. Freaky little, I'm kidding.
Take it up from there.
Take it up and replace it. I can't think of a better way. I have tanks, so I don't know.
So that's obviously a major undertaking to do propane. So I just, I want to let you know, that's what the options are as we think about this project, so. But the only way to put an in-ground tank is to eliminate one parking space, jet out the sidewalk, redo the sidewalk, and dig a hole, well, the current sidewalk is there.
So would the sidewalk be where the parking space is?
Yes.
Because you can put it over the tanks. That, I mean, the tank is going to be underneath where that parking space is you're going to give up, or is it going to be up this way?
It's going to be closer to the building.
Okay.
But in order to dig and have it as room, the sidewalk will need to be jetted out as well, and eliminate that parking space.
That one. Will you miss the space?
Not really.
I mean, they got, they can do this parking lot over here to go down to you if they needed to. I mean, it sounds like a plan to me. As long as you're thinking about, we're not going to miss the spot, and I don't know. What do you think?
I mean, I'm just thinking about the ancillary cost of, who digs? We dig? Like, who puts in the tank?
Townsend will put the tank in.
Okay.
Assuming with the Townsend, or DePerechad, or Gangney, or whatever.
But the cost of rebuilding the wall, like, is that?
I would probably be honest.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, the burbs that are there now, I believe they were purchased at Home Depot or someplace like that, and they were actually built by a civilian, former Select Board member, who put that, put the wall up.
Okay, so it's like...
But with any brick wall or block wall like that, you know, we've had an issue since day one, because you never put the seams together. You know, you have to have the stagger, that's what holds them together. And so now it's beginning to bow out, but supposed to, roots from the tree help push it out as well.
Yeah, and so that's still has to go.
So we do know that at some point, within a couple of years anyway, we need to do that whole retaining wall system. And you know, it's possible the Highway Department can do it, but I don't want to put, you know, any words in George's mouth.
It's itching, it's itching, it's bothering you. Yes, Judge.
Come on up. We're talking about it.
I worked in that propane industry for 20 years. Have they just talked about, could they move, could the tank go back and run along? I mean, oh, yeah.
Above ground?
Either or.
Where are you going to put it up there, though? It's all parking lot.
But you can put them right behind the wall, when there's no building involved. How much property we have?
You're talking about above ground, or?
They can put an above-ground tank.
That takes parking ground, please.
Nope, behind the wall.
What wall are we talking about?
The back wall.
Oh, you're talking the back?
Off the cliff.
By the parking, away from the parking lot, that could be, I mean, I believe, they always seem to put the tanks, when I used to deliver, furthest away, the end of the hose. So you always end up dragging a whole bunch of holes. I don't know if that was an option they even thought about.
Well, no, because if you have, to put the tanks in there in the building, now you're talking about digging up somewhere from that point.
Pipe can run along the building, you know.
Outside, not underground?
Along the building.
How do you prevent them from getting hit by a snowball or a plow or?
No, no, you can run that right up along the...
Oh, on the side of the door?
Correct. I had mine up coming on the second story of my house.
So whether that's because it's running a generator to higher pressure, if they can do it or not. But I know when we delivered gas to places, the tanks were quite a waste, but it destroys a lot of times. It's just another option I was, you know, thinking of.
So if it's on the other side of the fence, and how do we get the line from the other side of the fence? Through the parking lot?
You know, go down the backside of the building. You can run the line over the top of the garage doors, right to your source.
I'd call Townsend and see if there's some option.
Yeah, I mean, it's just another, just a thought, because I know when we used to do, we put tanks, people don't want the tanks posted out. Never do that. You know, they always want it as far away as possible.
But your problem is, on the other side of the fence, I don't know how much land is actually down. You know, we have to look at something to find that out, I guess.
But that would be another thought.
But your proposal is having outdoor tanks, above-ground tanks, but.
Be no problem.
They can drag the hole down that driveway and fill it.
Well, I can certainly ask Townsend if that's feasible with this.
Well, we have to try. And the bike would be only going to be more expensive.
So what is the difference between doing what Bob's proposing and what your, the justice?
The tanks are above ground.
Digging, you know, it's cheaper to put it above ground.
You don't return the sidewalk.
He's gonna put solid basin for them, that's all.
Right, you put a pit, they put either a pad or they can put blocks and secure the tank on the outside of the building. They can scrap it down even if they have to.
I got mine set on the ground.
But is it better to have it underground or is it better to have it above? I don't, I don't know what.
They had more.
You know, security wise, it's better to have it underground. It'll be tampered with or whatever. But thinking now, on the other side of the fence or here and there, the ground goes like this.
These things in the building.
But again, I don't know how.
The tank can be, gotta be ten feet from the building.
A hundred gallon, or the big, big tank?
Even a five-hundred gallon tank.
Yeah, you want a large, a large one.
You want the great big one.
Yeah, have a large one.
Ten feet from the, is the minimal. They can put a thousand gallon tank out there, they have to. Long this, away from the building. You know, and like I said, if you had, I don't know how much property you got behind that wall, that's the only other problem.
Yeah, don't know for sure.
But it's another option.
Yeah, we got a little to worry about it, I guess. Unless the generator goes to put between now and then, but. I'll check with Townsend, see if that's an option. And scout out some areas over there that, to see if it's feasible. I know on the other side of, once you get on the side of the wall, you know, the ground goes like this. So there's really no, a decent level spot to put anything.
I guess my other question is, so we've estimated the cost of a generator at thirty thousand. Do we include that, though, let's say if we put it underground on the side, do we include that expense?
We would need to know what all the ancillary costs are so that they're included in the order.
Yeah. So, I think we have some.
But there's gonna be costs regardless of which direction you go, right? I mean, you still have to pay the installation of the tanks and stuff, right?
Well, right, but going underground or how much are you rebuilding the ground in order to create a support for it to sit on are all gonna be more money than if you were just putting a tank above ground where it's already level, you know? And, and also rebuilding the sidewalk and what it would cost to replace the wall on the sidewalk over there would be more than if you had a place that was just already level and available. So we just want to make sure that we're calculating all of everything. So you have time to think about it, but we just want to make sure we get budget numbers for whichever way you all decide to go.
So you're saying though, that over here, we propose that you could put the tank, there isn't room to put an underground tank?
There may not be room to put an above-ground tank, I just, no, besides, you know, you gotta still be so many feet from the property line.
Yeah, okay.
So there's more investigation, it sounds.
Yeah.
But I just want to let you know, that's another option about putting it over there underground.
Yep.
I mean, the easiest thing to do is replace with another diesel generator that sits on top of the, on top of the tank like we have now. By far the easiest, the easiest thing to do, so.
Is there a difference in price between a propane one and a diesel one?
They're, they're pretty compatible.
Okay. And then you could just replace what you have there with, with a diesel one without doing anything? You still have to do the retaining wall, but you're saying it's kind of collapsing.
They would actually use the same cement pad as there now. The building would go away, so.
Even with a diesel one?
Yeah, even with a new diesel one, because it's all, it's just a great big box like, like a generator you have in that, an automatic generator you have behind your house. It's just in a big box. It doesn't even have a building like, like this one here does.
Because of the improvements that they made with them.
It's all self-contained, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, let's do a little homework and then you can let us know and make a decision. But yeah, we would need to know what all the installing costs were as well, so, okay, great. Thanks, Dr. All right, anything else?
Traffic signs and cones, must save it.
George!
I go shit right here.
You know, every time we have a storm and we end up having roads closed and trees down and what it might be, you know, we just do not have enough cones, we do not have enough appropriate track, road closure signs, road closure ahead signs in the case. So I spoke with the highway folks, I spoke with the fire, the fire chief. And, you know, we're all in the same predicament, we don't, we don't have enough equipment for those things. I'm suggesting that we have some money in the FEMA reimbursement account line item from the March storm of twenty eighteen that came in this year, six thousand, it's almost seven thousand dollars. That we use some of that to purchase cones, road closure signs, you know, men working signs, road detours and things like that. So I have, I have a list downstairs and probably at the next meeting, I'll bring the list to the board and with a price. We're looking about four, four thousand forty-five hundred dollars for cones for all, all three departments. And then multiple signs would go to the highway department, emergency scene ahead for the police and emergency scene ahead for the fire department. So it's about forty-five hundred dollars altogether. So I just want to make you aware of that. So, so there is money that came in as income this year from FEMA for that storm last year. So recommend that we use some of that money.
Okay. Any comments on that, Dr? Any comments?
No, I, I think it's a good idea. We actually, we looked at a bunch of signs.
Any comments, Mark?
I already had that conversation with Chief Ducharme.
Okay, we're all on board, you're all on the same page?
All on the same page, yeah.
Okay. All right.
And the last item that I have for the board is a personnel matter, so I request that we go into non-public next.
And move the go into non-public for personnel?
R S A ninety-one dash A four and B two A.
Would you like for me to go?
Oh, that can answer, okay. Roll call.
It's intention. They've done work once before and they said we'll do it in January.
All right, so you are back. You're back, where are we? All right, so please was gone, so fire.
I don't have too much, just a couple of things to teach you.
Are we done? Are you going somewhere?
I'm ready.
Did you, oh, are you done? Okay, thank you.
There we go. On the third call in the last hour or so.
Oh, my goodness.
First thing I have is purchase order number seventeen six zero. And it's to Ken Desmond. It's for our annual pump service testing of the fire trucks. Have to be done every year. This guy is, he's from Bathman. He's retired chief from someplace, he lives up there and that's his kind of, his business now. He's done our trucks rather than when Harry was there, so. He came down last week, both trucks passed, as they normally do. So his fee for the day, to take care of our two trucks, is three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
And who's purchaser one seven six zero to Ken Desmond for annual pump testing and the amount of three hundred and sixty-four dollars?
Second then?
All right. Any discussion? No. Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye, aye, all opposed?
It's all I have.
Wow.
I like that, huh?
Are we talking with number two again?
You certainly could, don't have to.
What do you get? What color?
He gets white.
No, they want to give me no.
All right, so can you give us your opinion on the article for the warrant to make the chief appointed versus elected?
My what? My opinion?
Your opinion.
My opinion on it? Well, I know we were gonna sit down and have some discussion of some of the pros and cons on it, but as I've kind of had some discussion with Caroline on the issue, some of the things that I think is warranted is the fact that you need to have town leaders protect itself as to who's gonna fill the position as far as not making a popularity contest. Because that could happen, it could be swayed by a group or, you know, of people that could put somebody in there that doesn't have any eagling of fire service for how to run a fire. So that was my major thing for doing it, or seeing it go that way. And I understand the voting end of it, it's been like that forever. I think we're one of like, the only two towns left in the state that do that. Everybody else has gone through some sort of appointed type system. And that way you're gonna be answering to you folks, because basically I think I'm my own entity, I can kind of run free if I wanted to. And I don't know if that's quite the way that it should be taken care of when it comes to one of your major town departments. I should think you should have some understanding and some control over how that is run.
I also thought that, in my opinion, I also thought that, that by the time you get elected and you start doing your job, it's time to run again. Which I've never saw the, the common sense in that. You're just getting going and getting things going the way.
Is it yearly?
It's yearly, yeah, it's ridiculous.
It's every March, you know.
If anything.
I got a file on the end of the year and then it's March, by the time it's all settled, now, okay, now you're in. So you've got basically that seven months that you can perform what you want to do. Then whether you want to run again or not, or if something came up and you get voted out, well, now it's just handed over to the next person.
Which, again, it could be a popularity contest, it could be anything, you know.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of risk for exactly that reason.
That's always been my thing, because I know when I came into this position, I think it's like seven years ago, there wasn't even a job description for the fire chief. I wrote my own and submitted. Because before I was gonna accept the position, I wanted to know what my responsibilities were gonna be. Of course, I understood what they were, but I wanted to know what the town expected. But I also wanted to know what the town was gonna do for me. You know, am I gonna be hung out to dry? You know, after discussions with, with Caroline and whatnot, and then a lot of us through the municipal association and whatnot, you have their vacuum and whatnot. But still, that's not the, the catch-all. So I wanted to make sure I was gonna have, something doesn't go quite right, you know, how would we work through those problems? As an elected person, where does that draw, where's that line drawn in the sand?
You don't have as much protection to let you know.
I understand that. So that's kind of where I was headed with some of that stuff, on, on that side. You know, because I sat down and I actually, you know, when we were gonna have a discussion, I had a pros and a cons list. And I didn't have a lot of pros in the voting side. Other than I think it's just tradition and some people like that and they don't ever want to see it changed. And that's all they do. I know, I can guarantee people that walk into this room and vote and they see a name down there that says Fire Chief, they don't know who it is.
No.
They don't know who I am, they don't know who anybody is. Oh, check, there's a name there, that's all you get. So I don't, I don't know if that, it's just the right way to do things.
Well.
You want somebody that you know fits the bill for what you want to run your fire department. There's so many standards nowadays. And I know you have them now because you see them all the time as the administrator, run a small one now. It's the same kind of hoops you gotta do to be able to run and manage a fire department. All the qualifications, all the training, all the research, all the stuff that you need to do to pick your federal level to the state level, just to us.
So much more than it's ever been.
I don't have time to do that stuff I wanted to. So I want, I want this call, but I can't, I guess.
What is your thoughts of residency?
That's the, that's the other big thing. I, I think you need, and when you start looking at the voting end of it, in my opinion, you really need to have somebody that's in town. You can't have somebody that's gonna run for this and is gonna live over in Rochester or something like that. We need them on a, on a moment's notice.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, you need to at least.
That also really shrinks down your available candidates for something like that. You know, because I'm gonna present the same thing when I sit down in front of the budget committee. There used to be a time when there was fifteen guys used to live in town and run the fire department. Now it's five. You know, and even their availability is not that great. So I would think you'd want somebody, or if not, if it's gonna be like that, you'd have to make some sort of stipulation that they were within a certain amount of time to be able to get here. Because most places, most every town that has a fire chief someplace, I know around here, the cities, they all have to live within their community.
Yeah.
Police chiefs and stuff also, so it's just because, you know, so many emergencies arise, you gotta be right there to respond and take care of it and whatnot, so. Oh, yeah, all right, I'll be there in twenty minutes, I gotta drive into Milton or something.
Yeah, that's, that's mainly a concern, that we would want to make sure that we have a restriction about the amount of miles or whatever.
Well, if you can, if you can get somebody that's right in town, then you have, I, I feel that would be the best thing for you to do is to put some sort of stipulation that you're in a certain diameter, a perimeter, or where they're gonna be. Because I know when I was in Dover, all the chief has to live in town. But even to be on the fire department, you have to live within ten minutes, ten miles of City Hall, just to be on the fire department as a member. So you put a marker on City Hall, you can go ten miles out and make that big circle. And if it doesn't hit your town, you can't like that.
Well, it's all about the time.
Because I want you to be, when there's an emergency and you have to get recalled to come back, you know, you can't be two hours. Places like P's and other fire departments, Nashville, some of the larger ones, I know guys that work on Nashville fire departments that live up, up towards Rumby and areas like that. They go in, they do their shift, they go home. It's no big deal. But in the other ones where they rely on a lot of mutual aid and a lot of callbacks, you gotta have your people everywhere able to respond in a very timely manner. So that's the issue that we always face here, so that's another kind of stipulation. Yeah, I make it tough sometimes. I mean, the town itself has been lucky for a lot of years, from Brownie to Harry to Spiny to myself, have all lived in town. All been employed and all got fire service background, so that's been able to carry on. And I can see a few of those maybe down the road, but after that, I don't know where it goes. There's just not a lot of folks to drop them. That pool is getting smaller and smaller.
And not having a full-time chief would be hard to say that you have to relocate to our town.
That would be doable.
Oh, I mean, that, I mean, that's realistic.
Yeah, oh, yeah. If you were sitting here with the package that you were gonna offer somebody now that I now encompass, you won't get anybody.
Right.
I guarantee you, you will not find anybody. Ain't gonna happen. There's, there's places that have full-time employment jobs, you know, and they can't even find fire chiefs for certain things that make a hundred grand a year, they can't even fill their positions. Because they won't come down for whatever the various reasons is. What's gonna happen here? They won't have that here. Fortunately, right now, you're still in a, in a comfortable position, but that's. And like you had said in retirement, that's some of the things when you start looking at it and you want to switch it over to appointed. Some of those stumbling blocks, right there.
Any questions?
It needs to go on the ballot, right?
It does, it does.
And also, if it were to pass and if he were to run and be re-elected, he would remain elected for the full twenty-twenty year until the, until March of twenty-one. If they were to both pass, then in March twenty-one is when the change would take place.
You know, if nothing else was to come about as far as, you know, if he isn't quite the right time yet to, to switch it over to appointed, change it from one year to three years. Something like that, so if a guy's in a position, he's always gonna be there long enough that he can actually make.
He'd do something and get it done.
But send if you get a bad one, then you're stuck for three years. Look, look it up.
I understand, I understand.
Two and a half more years.
I gotcha. Sometimes a yearly thing on that is not a bad thing, I understand. That's the only other option sometimes. But like, again, there's not been a revolving door in the position. Like Chief Ducharme, he's been here forever also. So you have that stability, things are able to move along, you've got that watchdog taking care of everything. If you had a different person in here every year for any kind of time, there's nothing positive, it's gonna come out. Every time you get something rolling, you're dying.
Oh, you have to run again. Okay, just wanted to have your input, appreciate it. Let's do it. Direction we're gonna go in, I don't know for sure, anyway. Well, you still have to sign up.
Yeah.
Well, that's mandatory. Yeah, this year, you still have to run this one.
I'm still, I'm not going anywhere for a bit, so it's, it's, it's fine. But I just think that's something that, you know, I mean, I don't know what the, you know, municipal association and stuff like that, what they've got, you know, those kinds of pros and cons. If they're gonna go that far, we don't care. But like I said, I think we're only one or two towns in the state that still do.
I think we've about covered them in the conversation.
Milton is one, I know, they do it for three years, Milton.
Yeah, Chief Martin.
No, I think it's three years, yeah. But he, he's elected, that's, I don't know about any of the others though.
See, because I think they may be somebody.
Durham maybe?
Swanson, Durham, I'll tell you.
They're appointed.
The manials of the chief that's been appointed. Ever since they separated, I went from the UNH Durham Fire Department, it just became Durham Fire Department, it's been-
Oh, it's a new Durham.
Oh, New Durham, oh, New Durham, yeah, New Durham, I think. And I don't think they are anymore, I think it's appointed.
They are appointed as well, I think.
I think they are, because they had some, some issues with the, with their chief a little while ago about him not performing his duties.
All right, well, we'll keep your post, you know, if it's a different day.
Okay. Yep, all right. I don't know if anybody's seen us the last few days, the fire station has been completely painted on the outside.
We did?
Cleaned up and-
It's very great. It's blinding.
It is blinding, you should, yeah, working on it, yeah. But yeah, that's all squared away. And just as positive input from our event that we held on Saturday, I had more positive comments because of the paved parking lot than I really expected. So the folks that are normal, regular residents that come to that event, they were, they were kind of blown away by it, and so that's probably the best thing we've done here. By the way, I was just trying to try for now, trying to get things squared away.
Got right over there, but yeah.
So that, that was a very positive thing, so just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. It has been.
Well, I mean, everybody was kind of involved, you know, getting the funding, decided to go and push it forward and get it done, so. I don't know, the town folks that I ran into all saw it, and understood it, and they were impressed.
That's good, it's good you have time.
Great.
All right.
Okay. That's all that I have. The only other thing that's gonna be coming down the road for us, as far as, you know, again, I've kind of managed my budget in a lot of different ways, but I tried to spend more upfront this year than I have in the past, I was waiting to time to the end to do things. And I forget what you told me, I was at fifty-eight or sixty-eight percent, biggest expenditure that we have left, we now, end of the year, as always, is gear.
What?
Gear.
Oh.
Protective gear. And, and one thing I wanna do is only if I try to get two sets done, and at three thousand plus a set, I'm gonna go for three this year, because I actually have a new member who's going through his training right now, he finishes in about a month, he's on Pine Street, and he's got a full-time job, some of those else, but he just wanted to get into fire service, maybe make a transition down the road, but that's another addition, instead of having a townie. So he's kind of using some gear that's right on the cusp of not being serviceable anymore, so I'm gonna make sure he gets a new set of gear. It's kind of an award for being a townie. And the other thing is, he's very active, he's there on all the calls, he has a CDL, so I can start using him to drive the tank truck, has a very limited on those operators. So there's a lot of positive that he has brought to the plate and offered for us, so I'm gonna turn around and throw some right back to him, so. And I know I'm a little short on that line, but I'll push it over a little bit just for that reason. And I want to write more stuff, but it's still gonna be within my budget, it just may not be within the PPE line item, but we can draw from some of the others, we've kind of had that discussion. Just wanted to give you the heads up on the command.
Okay.
Can you do a paper? Other than that, though, things over there, finding, getting geared up for our winter time stuff, and take care of that.
Very good, all right.
Anything else? You got a question, Miles, I see you jumped right in there.
No, I was just curious, I was just curious.
It's a six thousand dollar line, a seven thousand dollar line.
Yeah, six thousand.
Six thousand, so that's hardly two sets of gear.
Right.
That's not counting, if I got like boots and gloves and boots and everything else that goes with a pair of nails, I'd make an ensemble, so. That's something else that I'm actually gonna address on Wednesday night too, in my budget committee presentation, so.
Still plenty of hose money.
That's a set of gear right there.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, one of the ones I'm all for. And some of the line items that I've earmarked that we haven't dealt into since fire, so that's why I wanted to give you the heads up, that we'll be drawing stuff from other places just to meet that goal. Unless you tell me no, and if you tell no, then it's a different story.
Well, we'll reallocate, so it shows in those lines, right?
Yes.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
All I got.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, mine, I'm starting on my-
No, because mine-
No, actually, I'm cold. I'm not usually cold.
I still have my coat on, that's how cold.
My feet are cold, but I'm wearing sandals, so.
I don't know, I'm warm, I'm dressed, whoa. That's what it is. I forgot how you do it. Do you have stuff for us, or?
Are you?
Okay.
We had a incident the other day with a backhoe, a branch, you know, when it was doing, went to burn, a branch come back and hit the side of it, and do a couple of pieces of glass off the machine to wear, replace it. It doesn't come under our accident insurance, because it's not a thousand dollars, but it's not far from it. Eight hundred dollars for two pieces of glass on the side of the backhoe.
And we purchased order one seven seven three to Chadwick, Samos.
Chadwick Bay Ross.
Chadwick Bay Ross for one doom glass, parts for the truck for eight hundred dollars, parts, excuse me, backhoe.
Well, second town.
All right, any further discussion? No. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
How much was it?
Uh, eight hundred dollars.
That's just, then all of the shipping was, we had to put it up to eight, but it's about seven thirty-something.
Is the fourth?
Yeah. One piece of glass is coming from overseas, so.
Seriously?
She's made overseas.
Oh, you can't just buy something?
No, it's a, they're all pre-drilled and it's flat glass, but it's, it's got a bit, you know, dangerous iron and all that, so. And I need some cutting edges for our plows out of the maintenance budget, and cobide blades, and a sander chain for the smaller sander, the dump truck had never been replaced and it's getting brittle, so if it takes, it breaks during a storm, but then we'll change it. So I got cobide blades, sander chain, and shaft rollers for the sander, twelve eleven fifty-nine dollars, and some to Allen equipment.
All right. I will move purchase order one seven seven two to Allied Equipment for eleven hundred fifty-nine dollars and one cent for equipment.
Certainly. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye.
I didn't make our PO, but I wanted to talk about the possibility of putting a lean tool up on the side, right-hand side of the garage, to store our equipment that we, every scene we're changing, what we put in there would be like the sand, it would go undercover, instead of leaving them outside in the weather. The, the snowblowers and stuff would be undercover, because the water gets in them and, of course, we've had issues with, you know, we don't wanna keep the plows and stuff inside the building, because we can't move around, do any work. And I got a price to do a lean tool if there's money available. I know we got some money left in the main, building maintenance account, and there's probably other money, it's thirty, oh, thirty-eight hundred dollars. That would be a forty by twelve lean tool on the side of the building, so we can put all our equipment there, like the roller and stuff, that we don't use no window, we can put it underneath, undercover, instead, the roadside mower, and so we can have our winter equipment inside, and vice versa in the summer. Last year, we tried putting it in the sand side of the salt shed, but just the, the air temperature changes and stuff, a lot of the stuff, we had some rusting issues and stuff that we had taken care of, but I don't really wanna put stuff in the salt shed, because, again, you're putting in the elements that it doesn't need to be. So it's something to think about if we, I gotta ask Caroline, if we got, if we got money available to do that, I do get a quote from the middle of the lumber, it's three hundred, thirty-eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
That's for materials?
Material, we'll do it with.
Okay. So you would tie into the side of the building?
Correct.
And then, is it like a metal roof?
Yeah, metal roof, instead of shoes.
It's open on both sides?
Two ends will be closed, stop any, you know, drifting and stuff, the, the outside edge would be, so you can just drive the plows in, leave them in there, and, you know, anything that's out, get it out of the weather that we can take out of the building and move it around. I mean, we had a police radar trail that they used to have, we stored it in the transfer station, but we don't have room to store anything over there anymore, because we need all that room for the fails. So it was just, it's a thought, trying to get out the equipment out from under the weather, and, you know, so if, if there's money to do, we can do it ourselves, but I wanna make sure there is, we still have time and we can get it done. So I just, I wanted to bring that up. What else was it? Update on the truck. The dump body is in, the truck is being built, it's in the shop, however, there's a five-week wait on these sanding controls, and I told them, it's got manual controls in it, build the truck. We can operate without the computer this year, we can turn the sander and salter on annually, it just does not go off on road speed controls, which, when you start, it shuts off automatically, you know, wasting salt, it's all pilot green, no program. We can put that in, in the spring, or when they get a three, it takes a couple, three days to get, to change the system. The truck is already equipped with the manual system, and I said, we're not delaying the truck anymore, we need to have the truck, we can deal with that, you give us paperwork saying that when class comman arrives in the spring of next year, when things are slower, we can bring that truck in and have it fixed.
Right.
It's part of the cost of the truck.
Right, okay.
There's no waste of charge.
Okay. So why didn't it get ordered?
Good question.
Okay.
I had many good questions for that company, but I get, it's gonna be two weeks, every time I talk, and I'm tired of two weeks, I'm tired of three months, four months, five months, there's no reason for that, as far as I'm concerned. So just in case you're wondering, which I'm not gonna be here probably the other next truck, but they ought to put a stipulation in there that they have a deadline.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, definitely a lesson learned.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of towns weren't doing that, because they knew if they ordered a truck, the chassis would delay one thing or another, but this truck is built, it was just a matter of the dump truck situation, and you know, if you put a, they usually meet their deadlines, they do for Dova, so, you know, maybe they're a bigger town, but, you know, if you sign a contract, you should be able to fill that contract.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
So do we have an estimated delivery date, or?
We're supposed to get called back to make sure that things are in place this week, it's going in the paint shop, so hopefully next week we'll have the truck.
I didn't think it needed to be painted.
The body has to be, the truck itself is painted, it's, the bodies come in primed, they add the parts, like, you want certain lights for, like the spreader and, you know, so you can see what's going on. So that's it, that's part of it, it becomes your truck, you know, so they wanna make sure you put, they put stuff on where you want it before they paint it.
Okay.
So I'm hoping by the end of the week, we get a chance to look at it, they get it in the paint shop, and we get it next week. I mean, the guy from Freightliner is beside himself, he said, they, of course, they've had the truck for a year, but they haven't clicked with the dime on it, so.
No, they don't get it on until we get it on.
And I'm not blaming them, you know, they've been on it, just like I have, we've been on their case, but it's just, you know, the lack of help, that's, that's not our problem.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the truck's sitting there, you have a contract, but unfortunately, the contract's with Freightliner, it's not with us. So.
Hopefully, we don't get any snow until we get it.
It's nothing on Friday.
Friday, yeah.
And next Tuesday.
One, three, Tuesday.
Are you serious?
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
So what are you gonna do?
Well, plows are like we always do.
They have other, other trucks.
Might be a little cold in the backhoe, but we'll plow snow.
Oh, my goodness.
We get the pickup now, that's a backup, and they're not gonna have an amount of snow that's gonna, you know, set us behind.
Yeah.
Maybe a little bit, a little-
Pick up a couple of shovels.
We may be a little slower on salting, because we're down the sand, but that's all right. We get it done.
Okay, so are you all done on your stuff?
We got some.
Okay, yep, drainage at the Legion. Drainage at the Legion.
I think that project should be looked at, as far as replacing the pipe that comes through there, but my thought was that we could run a ditch lined around the back of the building, and so the route would run off into the ditch down on Foundry Street like it should be doing, would eliminate some of their problems, however, I'm being told that it's on water department property, so we, they have to have a meeting, so we're not gonna have time to do that this year.
Okay. Well, it's also Legion property, too, I mean, it's all on private.
So you need to do the work on, on water district property, and you need to access it via Legion property, so you really need to notify and get permission from both of them, and the commissioners aren't meeting until the twentieth.
So does the land beyond the parking or the road behind the Legion is sewer?
All the land, all of the not developed land behind Legion is water sewer property.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, but we're gonna fix that culvert anyway next year, right? That's in the plan?
The one down.
Well, isn't it a culvert, is the problem?
We gotta find out what it's gonna cost to dig that pipe up, yes.
But is that the plan, to fix that next year?
Well, if we can, you know, we get, I gotta have it looked at, I have somebody look at it and see what it would cost to do that project. It's a big machine, a bigger machine than what we have to get in there and do it, it's in the woods, I don't know how big the pipe is.
Okay.
But it's gotta be looked at, and I'm not sure if Coyle Tanner probably looked at that pipe before, I'm not, you know, that's part of that stormwater system, so I don't know what the, you know.
I don't know. Coyle Tanner, I don't think, looked at the stormwater system, we had others look at the stormwater system, but I don't think we have any data on what you need.
There's probably nothing there, but there is definitely a pipe, there's an issue there, because the water's coming out of the ground and-
So the problem is, we, we have the same problem for another winter, that water's gonna flood in that back area, and they're gonna be upset, and, and more to our concern, it's gonna undermine Foundry. So I've put a call into the Legion to try to explain the problem, and explain the timing problem, and they can work separately with the Water Sewer Commission and do the work, or, you know, the Water Sewer Commissioners on their own can, I don't know, they can, they can work that out, but I, I just don't see how, they, they ought to at least be on notice, and I, I just don't know particularly with snow coming, which may not last, but with them not meeting till the twentieth, that probably by the time they meet, we may be engaged in snow. It's tenuous, we'll see. I, I can still send a letter to both the Water Sewer District and the Legion, and let them know what's going on, that we've got a time constraint, and we'll do it if we can do it, and see if the commissioners will give us the permission.
I mean, the ditching should have been maintained by them, it was, I mean, if they run it back to their property.
Right.
You know, I mean, I believe that should have been, and should they take, they would have taken care of all of their own property? I mean, different-
So they ought to at least know that, that there's something that they can do-
They can help themselves as well, yeah. They can help themselves as well, yeah.
And try to find a different way to plow.
Yeah, yeah, cuz it's kind of, it's their land and you're, we're doing something, or we're proposing to do something on their land versus town land, so.
I mean, looking at the stormwater issue too, I mean, if there's a broken pipe that causing this issue, then whose problem is it?
Well, we have to fix that.
And that's the only reason why I would suggest we get involved at all, is just because the culvert would be our problem that, you know, may be exacerbating it. Otherwise, between two other separate parties, I, I wouldn't propose that we get involved.
Right. But I think because of that, we, we kinda have to, we gotta fix that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we fix that, hopefully that resolves the problem.
Right, but it would still be better to try to get in there this year if we can, because it's the winter when it rains in January and the ground's frozen that it becomes a problem.
So that's what they have launched, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Willie Street Waterline? Are you going to that meeting? Were you invited to that meeting?
On a Friday night?
On a Friday night, yeah.
Well, okay, so I, I think the question really is, with snow coming on Friday and then again potentially on Tuesday, is the board gonna entertain making an exception to the ordinance and allowing them to cut into the road after November fifteenth? Because I think if the answer is no, then that probably negates the need for a meeting and we can let them know that and have a meeting in spring, closer to whatever.
Well, I think they still have to have a meeting though, because they, I mean. Well, maybe they don't need a meeting.
All of a sudden, it's November and they wanna do this, I mean.
Well, because they got denied.
Oh, yeah.
That's why, because project committee voted no, they got their legal, so they can't have the extra funds. But they also haven't gone and gotten another quote or anything, when you're talking about a hundred and something thousand dollars. I thought it was one twenty, but I think it's a hundred and three, a hundred and six.
I think the quote is, they proposed a hundred and six in the agenda that they dispersed.
So, I mean, you gotta.
We're getting that freezing, I mean, freezing temperatures, you start digging and you're gonna get good paving and stuff done.
Four, four at all, I mean, paving.
Apparently is, they put a liner inside, they're gonna be inserting the pipe inside the pipe that exists. It's a new system, a new way to do it.
If everything works the way it's supposed to work.
Right.
But they also have to, they have to make holes and they, the movie that I saw them at the meeting, they want small holes.
Well, right, so, so I guess it's as simple as the board deciding.
Well, they're not, we're gonna allow paving after, what is it, the fifteenth?
November fifteenth.
Yeah.
But you don't even have to allow it at any point now, if snow is forecast and that's gonna impede your ability to repave.
Right. Right. Alright, what do you guys think?
I, I didn't read the email, I saw there was an email about it, I didn't read it.
Let me just, can I give you a little of my information from attending the last meeting? There was a lot of discussion about the project and a lot of controversy because of what you committed, didn't bring it forward. But one of the things that was a gift, in my opinion, was that the residents who were there said that they are okay to wait till spring, knowing that there's a project, a plan.
Yeah.
The, the worst part of it all was, there wasn't a plan.
Right.
And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, am I saying it correctly? That they were, they were saying, we can wait until spring, knowing what we know what's gonna happen and get it approved at the March meeting and having the funds and not getting these big, what do they call them? When the water people are gonna have to pay something upfront.
Oh, the special, the special assessment.
You know, they were supposedly gonna have to pay it by December of this year in order to do it. And, and we're talking about two or three hundred dollars. And now if it goes through and gets approved in March to go forward with it, then that, it would just be going across the four months, correct? I mean, you still have to pay it because you still have to come up with the money.
Well, that's debatable and to be determined, that, you know, the chairman was talking about a five-year loan, but the language of the article can be changed on the floor. So how, you know, it doesn't have to be a loan, the people present wanted it to stay as a special assessment broken out over four payments throughout the year. So that all can be decided, but
Yeah.
It's, they did say that they could, it had been going on for a number of years and they just wanted a plan, so.
Right. So I felt good about them, and they really, they didn't have to say that, you know, so I feel good about it. So I don't really think it's as emergency as it was first led to believe. And the timing is not good.
I mean, the schools gotta be involved, I mean, there's a whole bunch of people, they gotta be involved with this project.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't shut down water during a school day.
Well, they had this plan to hook them up to water, but I'm not sure that that is.
Well, they put above-ground water lines in the winter.
Well, I know, I know.
They freeze.
They'll heat the lines. And then they also, you know, if you wanted to replace your pipe from your house to the, to the road, I mean, that was the perfect timing, but that's on the residents as well. So not a lot of time for them either to plan for that. And the school, the school, I don't know what their piping is.
Well, and the school had not budgeted for that and the residents weren't aware of that.
So, I think we're, I think that we would be okay to delay it and, you know. So, I would say we should, we should hold to our ordinance and our policy.
Okay, so, um, are we going to then suggest that we, that the commissioners hold a meeting in the spring? Or that we don't feel a need to go to a meeting until the spring? Or do you still wanna make an effort to attend that meeting either yourself or sending me?
You mean the one Friday night?
Yeah.
I already applied that I would be there.
Is it, isn't it just to show what they actually do, Ted Barry, the company's gonna do the job, right?
Well, that's the one quote that they received.
Well, that's the only one quote they received.
Okay, but I mean, they're, they're just showing you basically how they do it, right?
Well, people just had question, well, people just had questions at the meeting and, you know, it was better to have.
I mean, so, why would, I mean, they could still have that meeting and it wouldn't affect anything.
Well, but is there a benefit to having it now?
I guess they're missing the whole point about getting another opinion or another quote because of the value of it, yeah.
Well. I agree with you, I give the sense, especially facing that job.
Right, but I mean, that's, I don't think that's something that we can control by having the public hearing.
I, I can't get involved with any of it, so.
Yeah, but I at least think that we don't have to, we don't have to treat it as, as much of an emergency, knowing that there's a plan and to follow the right procedures for March, you know, so they'll have to have their hearings and.
And we paid, we paid last winter, after the first snowstorm that closed that route, and last year they could have had a hearing, so we're not going that route again.
Yeah.
Can we leave it unpaid?
No, well, you can, but it's, you have chances of catching a plow and doing damage on the driveway.
So what are you, what are your feelings?
No, I, I think if.
I mean, the residents really don't care, I mean, I would.
Well, they, well, they care, but they, but they were gracious enough to say, we can wait a little longer, now that we know there's a plan, is pretty much what they were saying, before there wasn't one. And it just didn't seem to be a priority, so. Jessica?
Yeah, I agree, it makes sense to wait.
Okay. So. Do we need to take an official vote on that?
I think there's a clear consensus.
Consensus, so that's okay, so you'll notify them?
I will.
Okay. Alright.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Alright. Request for a private catch basin.
Oh, upon. Give him a guy, one twenty-six, General John Sullivan has a water problem. What's his name? Non-Juru called me and asked if he could tie that storm drain into the stormwater system. So I brought it up to stormwater meeting, just in cases, you know, what their thoughts were on it. There's definitely a water problem up there. I guess it's on an aquifer, that whole area, so.
The whole world.
So. The water's gonna end up in our system either way. Me, it's not a big deal and it's, again, it's all up to the board to allow those things and I agree with Carolyn, if there's a what they call it, easement, at least so we can access stuff. I mean, there's gotta be an honest, there's gotta be something decided. You know, you're gonna do it for one, you're gonna do it for everybody.
Well, see, that, that's my concern, is, you know, once you, once you open the door, you know, it could be. And the other thing is that we don't have any control about what is in someone's garage, that water's gonna go through and that's gonna go down into the storm drain, right?
So this is not a garage drain, this is out in this driveway.
Well, it can go, things can flow. If you're washing down your driveway and it's gonna go into, I mean, in his garage and he's gonna, or in his driveway, if he's having a leaking problem, that's gonna go in the storm drain.
Yeah, I mean, his driveway, his driveway is.
And who's gonna be responsible for testing, who's gonna be responsible to make sure it gets clean? Like we have to do, because of stormwater, I mean, that's my only concern.
That's why I, that's why I brought up the stormwater meeting and I think that's why, again, you have choices.
So, it's gonna be a drain in this driveway that a pipe runs.
A pipe runs into our storm system.
There's, there's, there's drains up that far?
There is, they, they ran a catch basin system the whole length of that road, I believe in that.
In the lower half, from Silver Lane to Roberts Road.
When they fixed that.
Puts a fourteen feet down in places.
Really?
There was a.
Where does it empty?
It goes into that awful woodland, I believe, in that.
Oh, okay, oh, back there.
Back there, that runs out across Route Four and down into, well, heads to the river.
Yeah. Wh-what's the condition, so it's pooling in the driveway?
Yes.
Is there no other way to address this?
Oh, the driveway. Again? The house is on the bottom of the hill in the driveway. Yeah, well, it's me.
His driveway's the low point and, and the neighbor is uphill.
I don't know which house this is.
Right across from the cemetery.
Oh, that's Reyno's house?
Who's it?
Is it Reyno's house or Remat's?
Reyno, is it Reyno?
Yes.
It's Reyno.
Hmm, I don't remember that being that way.
It's not that low apparently, but it's, it's.
Low enough.
Yeah, but what, it can't run up the driveway to get onto the, into the storm, just into the road.
Can I re-pitch the driveway?
No, it's.
I don't, I don't think the idea either, you know, now everyone's gonna want it, I want a drain line driveway.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing.
But out back, out back of the house, it's a wetland, apparently, and, you know, when it rains, it pours.
Well, it's exacerbated much like Cricket Lane by recent winters where we have
Yeah.
rainstorms in January where the ground's frozen and there are snowbanks and so there's no place for the water to go.
I mean, let's hope it's colder this year, I don't really hope that, but.
Yeah.
I do.
But it just, I mean, it just opens the door, that's the only thing I'm concerned about, and I'm concerned about the testings and taking that everything that we have to do as a town, this is now on private property.
Right, you're, you're right, we've lost control over.
Well, so I would suggest to the board that if you wanted to allow it, that we take the time and not allow them to do it until spring and work on an ordinance that regulates what it's allowed and how it's allowed and prescribe that we do get an easement on the private property owners' land around there so that we can, you know, require that they maintain it, but that we can access it in case they don't maintain it and.
Make them liable if there's a leak.
And for testing and whatever else we need to research and hold them liable for. So, it's another question about, do we wanna expend the energy in that way for this homeowner? And then it may or may not create a precedent, or do we just, or, or you can just deny the request.
Yeah, I mean, the, the way, the way we've been moving with policies, um, it would be at the bottom of the list of policies. But we do have a plan for policies now, so it might actually. I would rather handle it that way and then we can address it for everyone, right?
Do you wanna think about it?
You can certainly have time to think about it, it's not something that you have to decide now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Of course, his window for doing it, if, you know, before frost is, is waning and that's okay, you still have the right to take your time to think about it. I wouldn't expend the energy to, well, you can think about it, but just know that, you know, if you were to move toward granting it, I would just suggest that we work on regulations to make sure that we're protecting ourselves from whatever might happen.
I would say that we notify them that at this point in time, it's not something that we're able to do or allowed to do. We would have to work on a, a process and leave it at that.
So, I did notify them of that and I can just leave it vague as to whether or not we're gonna get to it, but at least it's, you know, we're gonna consider it for now.
Is that clear? Okay. It's something we're gonna consider it, but not currently, not this, not this year, it will not happen this year.
I honestly don't believe it's the first one on that street this time yet. It's a private contract to put the system in, right?
Well, sometimes things happen underground that we don't know about, and over the upcoming years with the permit, we'll discover these things.
You know, like, like some pumps are piped into the system.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I know, and, and again, that's not something that we can control. So, alright, so we'll just tell them that we deferred it for now and.
We may or may not consider it in the future.
Yeah, we let them know if we do.
Okay.
Okay, alright, very good. Hi, I'm done with you, unless you have anything else.
I don't think so.
You guys, no, no?
No, no, good.
No, you want me to give my, uh, Wednesday night, just that, on that?
Wednesday night? You mean transfer stations, I mean, does Ed want you here? Is the key question.
Well, pretty much, I'll keep that under control, that's.
Well, I mean.
I'll ask him if he needs me to come, I'll feel about.
If he wants you to come, I mean, this is, this is his department, so to say, but you are ahead of all of it, so if you feel that you should be there, more than welcome to come, I mean, but, I mean, if you think Ed can do it, then that's fine too.
Been on that side of the table, so.
Right, I mean, yeah, it's mostly his responsibility, so, but if you want to, that's fine too.
He's doing a good job over there, so I mean.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll come if he, I'll just type notes if I was.
If it's required for you to be there?
Right.
That's Ed, he's, he's a, he's a transportation manager, right? Whatever, he's whatever, so, but I would just check with him, make sure he's comfortable. Okay.
I don't think there'll be an issue, I just want, you know, verify that.
Okay, alright.
I think we'll do it.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George. We're gonna move elsewhere to the other meeting, okay? Okay, so, two, two thousand and two budget needs a, okay, so we don't have any revenue, right?
No, um, we can do revenue if you wanna do revenue, I'm gonna try to see if I can pull up the budget, the correct version, I apologize for that. But at least you have October expenditures.
Yeah.
There's your silver lining.
So this number is correct? Two million, four, four, nine, two seventeen, I think.
Um, the number on the agenda should be correct, the number in the spreadsheet that I just gave you reflects the other percentage you came up with, so.
Okay, so we just took a few for a motion to approve the bottom line?
Well, I'm seeing two, five, oh, nine, six, thirty-one, that's wrong.
Right, but that's not the number that's on the agenda.
Well, right, because remember.
Oh, oh, but you're saying what we approved the last time, not what's, oh, okay, schedule.
Right, because the spreadsheet you have is correct, so.
Alright, so we can go ahead and do that, part of it, and get it, just make sure we get the correct version of it, so do you guys wanna make a motion to accept that as?
Be delighted.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we propose a bottom line budget of two million, four hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars for the twenty-twenty budget.
Okay, alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, just say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so. Now the document.
Um, that's the color worksheet that you have, which is somewhat filled out with my recommendations. The column all the way to the, the green column is what I am proposing for those areas where I am proposing something. I also printed for you what I think that you are thinking about, and you haven't voted on CIP, on unworn article items, but I printed that out for you because it does play into this worksheet, because whatever comes from the CIP fund or from another fund such as the Transportation Capital Reserve Fund, those are, those transfers in are considered revenue. So you don't have to decide that part necessarily tonight, we can continue to talk about it, but I just wanted you to recognize that it plays in. So, right now, if, if you wanna start the second to last block on the revenue sheet, that, that big number, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six ninety-five, that is the total based on what I printed out for those warrant articles. So, as you change your mind for what you're gonna fund or how you're gonna fund it from those items, that'll change, that's the number that will change.
I thought we came up with a number of like a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Well, yes, that's from Capital Reserve only, well, well, so. It depends on how you fund things. The number on the CIP worksheet is closer to that, it's not even as high as, as two hundred thousand dollars. But then there's the sidewalks, which comes from the Transportation Capital Reserve Fund, which is in there. And then, you're putting money into the CIP, but also taking money out of the CIP. The generator is not at all funded through CIP, so.
Right.
Right now, the, the articulating loader is, is kind of a key factor in, that may be the change in the number too, cuz that's like eighty-six thousand dollars there, if you.
We talked about moving out of a year.
Well, right, but then I heard that it came back up for the Budget Committee meeting, so I, I don't know where you're all, you know, since there wasn't an official vote and it was the CIP recommendation, it's in here, but by all means, yes, you did discuss removing it and waiting a year, so.
So there must be something, I don't have my material from the night we discussed that, but there must be something that fell off here because.
Well, the other thing is, don't, so don't confuse this with the number that we're gonna put in, into CIP.
Oh, okay, I am confusing it. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Because that's money out.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I think you're doing, okay, so.
That's been good.
Money in from CIP is two twenty-nine, six ninety-five, according to the printout of capital items. That's not from taxation, cuz that's not considered income.
So if you take out the loader, then you're removing eighty-five, six ninety-five away from that, two twenty-two?
Correct.
I mean, two twenty-nine?
Right. And then you're down to one forty-four. And by the way, it doesn't include the twenty-five thousand dollars for sidewalks, so you'd have to add that in, it's just the CIP. so you'd have to add that in, it's just the CIP. That, that line is just CIP. So in any case, with that being said, we can, we can leave that aside for now.
Okay.
Otherwise, for anticipated revenue, we start with a variety of taxes and for the most part in the tax box, we don't have any of these taxes anymore. We did away with resident tax, we've never had a yield tax, excavation tax and such. The land use change tax goes into a different fund and you can, you see numbers there because we've budgeted numbers there before erroneously because those numbers go into another capital reserve fund. So the only amount in this section would be the interest and penalties on delinquent taxes. I, I propose decreasing that amount and, and of course, it's all up for discussion, but the legislature recently changed the interest rate on delinquent taxes from twelve percent to eight percent. So I would just anticipate that we'll receive less revenue from that. I, I have, you know, there's no way to predict by how much. So, you know, I, I decreased it by the same percentage, twelve moving to eight, so not to say that that's the correlation, but that's where that number comes from.
How much do we usually collect? Do we, do you know that? Or, I don't know if usual is the right...
I do have that.
Because there's a, there's a penalty and interest?
Well, yes, for example, if, like, when we had inventory penalties, that's where you can see the income from that or penalties for paying your resident tax late, for example, would be on that, on that line as well, so...
Okay. I'm good with the sixteen thousand in that case.
Okay.
We need to believe we're at that point.
In the second section, licenses, permits and fees, I would propose keeping it the same. There's no data to suggest reason for changing any of those. I changed the, you all, upon my recommendation, changed the other licenses, permits and fees, three two nine zero, that, the three two nine zero line, because planning fees are up this year. There's no reason to expect that they would necessarily stay up. So it was revised for this year, but I would, I would stay with forty two thousand there. So there you have the subtotal for that section, seven hundred and forty one thousand two hundred and fifty. And then the state sources are based on what we know at this point from the state. Meals and rooms tax is, is something we get paid in December. We never really know what it is until we receive it. It is the aggregate collection by the state of all the tax on hotels and restaurants and then redistributed to all the cities and towns. So I kept that figure the same, knowing well that it's likely to change some, but we have, there's no indication of what it would change to. The highway block grant, however, that is, we did receive notice from the state about that, so that should be actual. And then the railroad tax there has always been that for, for recent memory. So on the bottom line, three three seven nine from other governments, the previous eleven thousand nine hundred that was budgeted was the potential grant for the radar message board that was not approved, which is why it was decreased by that amount. I put thirty thousand dollars in there for the stormwater asset management grant. That's what that is. So that's two hundred and twenty one thousand three ninety one for that section.
What about the grant that Bob is going to get from his generator? He said he was, they will qualify for a grant on the generator?
I will ask him about that. I did see that, but I, I missed that one, okay.
But you can always receive.
You can always receive more, I mean, you know, so this is why we do two reports. So if we don't, we'll propose whatever we propose now and that will inform what the impact will be of the budget, which you never really know until you get to where we are now in the time and then, you know, where we set the tax rate. So revised estimated revenues is your second shot for getting that. Nonetheless, I will... I don't know if he said was that just for the propane, like burying the propane tank? Or was that for the whole installation?
No, it was for the generator, for the whole, the whole.
Okay.
I think you weren't here.
Yeah, I think I...
Oh, I think you're right, she wasn't here, that's right.
Yeah, I'll check with him.
Yeah, it's from my home line of security.
Right. Okay. You don't need to finalize this, I'm sure the Budget Committee's going to want to see it as part of the town budget, but I think we can revisit it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not worried about doing that right now, but if we know what we should...
Yeah, it just gives you a general sense of, of where we are. Income from departments, I don't see a reason for that to change necessarily.
And what is that?
Well, actually, I take that back, it, it'll change some. So this is, parks and rec is where it's going to change. This is income from registration fees.
Oh, oh, oh.
So it's, it's police detail, it's transfer station disposal fees, it's library copy overdue fees, it's parking fees and alarm overdue fees. It's any, any income that the other, that departments generate that comes in. So it's, so eight thousand, eight, parks and rec. Parks and rec is what, team, they, well, not even necessarily. So I was going to say you can decrease it by the amount you would receive from team, but you are thinking about increasing your camp rally tuition, so...
I would just leave it, yeah, and we didn't have a knock team. It might just be a wash, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that part.
So that's the only part that would change and that's where that figure comes from. Miscellaneous revenues, we, we received more than we had budgeted because of the highway truck that was sold. I brought it back to two thousand dollars because I don't, I don't know that we have any...
Got a cruiser?
You know, you, there will be a cruiser.
Which is minimal.
Within two thousand dollars, I think. You know, I, I don't know that we've got anything that's going to generate that kind of income. Interest in, on investments, that's due to the treasurer's handiwork with our primary account there.
I... I might reduce the, only because rates are on the down.
That's a good point.
And maybe we just cut last week. But it's, might not be worth, I, I don't know, might not be worth trying to figure out. It's a couple of thousand dollars.
We don't have a full year's worth of data under, you know, because you, you earn more when you have more money, you know, like, like it ebbs and flows twice a year, so we don't really, so you can't just take one month and multiply it by twelve to figure it out. So we don't really know what a full year is going to...
Should we knock it down a little bit, like a couple grand or something?
Yeah, just to be more...
Change to thirty four?
Thirty four?
More realistic, I think that makes sense.
And then other, other is the DRAs term. For the cell tower lease falls under that, the hydroelectric plant, the lease on property, which is the field that's rented to the farmer and it's also tomb rental fees should somebody pass in the winter. And then Homeland Security or any other kind of reimbursements that way. And then the, the historical committee or, you know, any kind of miscellaneous revenue falls under there, so that's what's comprising that one twenty. So that's a category total of a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars and then you've got your inter operating funds in. So I just wanted to familiarize you all with, with the spreadsheet and where we're at with it. But I would suggest that we, it's up to you, I can wait and find out a generator total.
Well, then we can improve it, not...
That's true.
So I would say let's bring forward what we have and then, and then we can adjust it if we know, as long as it's better than...
Okay, so the other adjustment to make is the two hundred and twenty nine six ninety five does not include the twenty five from, for sidewalks, because it's a different fund, so I'm going to add that. We just need to keep in mind that if you adjust the capital items, that this number is going to change. But again, you're right, you have the second shot with the revised estimated revenue in September and that's what that's for. So the new amount for that line is two hundred and fifty four six ninety five for a category total of two hundred and fifty four thousand six ninety five.
So you're adding one of the two fifty four six ninety five?
It's not adding the ten from above, so it's two, it should be two sixty four.
Two sixty four.
Two sixty four six ninety five. And that's a total of one million five hundred and sixty two thousand eight thirty six. One million five sixty two eight thirty six.
And that's revenue?
That's revenue.
So we need to adopt that as our...
You can, you can choose to adopt it or like, you know, it, it's all about how you feel about, what's your confidence with those capital items, proceeding with those capital items and whether or not you want the generator included. So you can approve it now, we can also revisit it later.
Well, let's, should we be talking about capital items now and then we can go back to the...
Sure.
Okay, so...
I just want to be clear with the cruiser, the 2019 cruiser, it has to go back on the warrant because of how the article was worded, that if you want to continue to pay future lease payments out of the CIP as was intended, then we have to put an article on the warrant to that effect and it will come out of CIP. So while it says, you know, it's coming out of CIP and it is, it's really last year's warrant article that we are correcting that would not have been carried out without this correction. I need to...
What happens if it fails?
Then you're going to give back the cruiser or you're going to continue to find eleven thousand dollars per year out of the operating budget?
We're not going to do that again, right?
Well, we're going to have to do it again with the 2020.
No, it's the wording, it's the wording.
It was the wording.
It's the wording, which we're not going to say we have an escape clause out of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or whatever it's called.
DRA did not do a pre-review of our warrant as we thought and hoped and they would, as they usually did. When they changed to this portal model, you have to specifically request that and with the chaos of last year's budget cycle, that didn't happen. So they caught that error when they were doing their, their background work in preparation for setting the tax rate.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
So we are going to work with DRA not only to correct that warrant article but to make sure that the next one is an all future ones, you know? We will learn and do the pre-review.
Okay, so the generator's out of taxation?
Right, there's, well, so you have eleven, twelve thousand dollars in the CIP that you found, that for that first year of the cruiser lease that you found, did out of the operating budget instead. You can otherwise reallocate funds within the CIP. You haven't looked at that and decided whether or not to do that. So all of this is up for discussion, you can change... This is what the CIP reflects for funding status, but you can change it.
So I wasn't at the meeting where the articulating loader re... ended up back on here?
Denise, I don't, I don't know that you were just, you know, you were entertaining it or not. I just know that the budget, you know...
We didn't take an official stand on it.
Well, right, so, so the select board decides what articles end up on the warrant, so...
This is on, this is CIP coming to us and saying this is what they're, they are, they are telling us. So, but we haven't taken an official stand on it at all and if, you know, if we want to delay it another year, we can. I mean, that's still an option right now, so... Let's go from the top to the bottom. So, so we'll go back to the generator. The fire extrication equipment, is that something we want to get this year? Is this, this is fully, right, this is a full price?
Yes, that is a full...
The three pieces, three different, okay. So how do we feel about that? Pro, okay, so we're going to keep that on there. Town hall assessment, now is this a good number?
It's the best number I have and so the company that was, we all hoped going to provide me... Who, who even thought that it would be so hard just to get to, get a budgetary figure? But they're now not going to get us a budgetary figure in time and maybe in the spring they will, which is not helpful. So I went back to the facilities director to the, at the school who may himself be able to find us a better budgetary figure, but you can put this on the warrant and hopefully by the time March comes, we'll know better. The deliberative session can change it or we can decide that there's not enough money and it won't happen. I, you know, it's, it's the best number we have, but it's a shot in the dark.
And what do you guys think about that?
Yeah, I mean, that's not coming from the CIP.
Taxation.
Right, so if it... I mean, thi- this doesn't have to be decided to talk about revenue, right? Because there's no revenue source.
That's true, that's true, right.
But we do have to take a stand on the project.
Yeah.
My only thing is, we, we're going to have to do that in order to find out really how this building is, in order to find out what the plan is for the space needs to exactly...
Right, to connect the dots.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't disagree. I do agree.
Jessica? I don't have anything.
I think we moved, moved forward with a warrant article.
Go for it and let it...
Pass of the test.
Okay, that works for me. All right, so the articulating loader.
So I, I kind of need my spreadsheet to, like, there was a...
The CIP one?
Yeah, there was a reason that we moved it out of there and my...
You were going to use, so it requires a thirty five thousand six hundred and ninety five dollar payment this year into, so of the whole payment into the CIP, it's taking up thirty five thousand six ninety five and you chose to move thirty to fund the generator and you were going to keep six hundred ninety, you know...
But you have, okay, so someone, you, has the generator not from CIP, it's from taxation?
Well, so...
But we think it was a grant.
You, you never really officially took a vote on the CIP either, but you, you know, you are quite right that the last discussion was that the articulating loader was going to wait a year and the money going into CIP that was going to go to that would fully fund the generator instead and you would leave the five thousand six hundred ninety five dollars toward the articulating mower that would then wait another year and it would have a little bit more money on it.
I think this can wait, that's my...
Well, yeah, I think the generator, because this is a public safety and, what's the word?
I mean, we have a working generator now, right?
Command center, we have lots of power, they need to have, you know, but...
Okay, so is that the rule of the board that we put thirty, so we fully fund the generator on a CIP and then delay the articulating motor, mower?
Until another, yes, 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 yes. Sorry, articulating order, whatever the hell you are. Well, he's going to have to show you it, because he had really nice pictures when he proposed it, so... Yeah, I'll have to get him to show you that.
So it says.
A well-spoken doctor. They can do sidewalks. Okay, so this, so that's gonna move the generator to CIP. All right, and the forest vehicle, fire, forestry vehicle, five fifty-five, coming out of, so it's fully funded through CIP?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sidewalks, okay, so.
So, to be clear, this is going to all but wipe out that fund. It's got twenty-two thousand dollars in it now, it's gonna probably get, you know, ten or eleven thousand dollars deposited into it at the end of this year.
Yeah.
So it'll have maybe thirty-three or thirty-four thousand dollars when you are going to subtract twenty-five, so you'll be left with about nine in there.
Okay.
And then, of course, we're only actually withdrawing whatever we actually use for the project, so it may not be that much.
Right, okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. Yeah, because we've had a lot of concerns with the sidewalks, so we should definitely touch on that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so. So taxation is going to only be the town hall, right?
That's what I have now, yes.
All right.
So, um, so that brings the CIP total, the income from the CIP fund to a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and that brings the income from, um, capital reserve funds to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars even.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Say that again.
So, um, the total income, income, so, so remember, money from reserve funds to spend for things, that's income. So the total we're gonna use from CIP is a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Versus the two twenty-nine, six ninety-five?
Correct, and then, um, the total from all funds, because twenty-five thousand is coming from the transportation capital reserve fund.
Adding those two together.
Right, those two together is now one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So that's the amount that we're putting on the three-nine-one-five capital reserve fund revenue line.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So this section becomes two nineteen, uh, I'm sorry, two oh nine even, right, ten and one ninety-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Can't write on the screen.
So that's, um, at this point, total revenue of one million, five hundred, seven thousand, one forty-one dollars. One million, five oh seven, one four one.
Okay. But then that also, do we have capital on here?
So I did add, um, well, now that I've messed up spreadsheets, um, I'm not sure anymore. So when I, when I put the capital items on the operating spreadsheet, I'm putting their total cost, I'm not putting, um, I'm putting the warrant article figure, I'm not putting the taxation number, just to be clear. But, yes, I think it has everything, so I will revise the loader.
Yep.
And otherwise, I think it's correct. Um, it needs the second cruiser.
So this land appraisal for five thousand?
That is funded by the conservation land trust fund, and it only happens if there is a land owner that wants to put their land in conservation and requests financial assistance from the town to do so.
So we don't need to account for that in revenue?
No, because it's not a transfer in, it's a, it's a transfer between.
Between, okay, I get you.
Okay, so, so the reserve fund needs to change, right? Because it's gonna be, instead of one eighty-six, eight ninety-five?
Yes, in the, in the, in the, the operating budget is not up to date, and by the way, there are likely other warrant articles that we haven't.
Adjusted, yeah.
Yes, you know, like the, the conservation one.
Yep, okay.
So, that's just, I wanted to address the other funds so that we could get the revenue figured out.
Okay, so consensus is we're accepting the revenue?
And, and I will get you a new spreadsheet for the operating budget that reflects the, um, the warrant articles and, um, your decision on the warrant articles, and has the correct operating fund proposal.
Okay, all right, so, well, do we have to plan another budget meeting?
Well, um, it's not so, you do at some point have to figure out the default budget. Um, that, I think, is, that and, um, sort of finalizing the CIP are all that you have left to do. But, um, I would just have you hold off on that, because, um, later on the agenda, you'll see the tax rate setting. And, and the update on that is that we don't have a tax rate, which isn't really news, except I bring it up anyway, because once we do have a tax rate, the board is going to have to get together pretty quickly to evaluate that and decide whether you will accept it as, um, the preliminary rate that the state proposes, or whether or not you want to, um, put any fund balance money in there to offset it.
Yep.
So, we need, we need for you to do that pretty quickly.
When, when do we, so, I know you don't, we don't have a status on when we're getting it, right?
We don't have a status, and we've reached out many times, and the state is not.
But when do we need it by?
Very communicative, we always hope to have tax bills issued November first, um, it doesn't.
No, December first.
No, November first.
Those do due December first, usually.
Oh, jeez, okay.
So, this happens every year that, you know.
Okay, so.
It's just the nature of, of how it is, so, um, any day now, she will call and, and say it's coming, and talk us through it, and.
Okay.
I will let you know.
So we might need a.
So I would, I would say let's notice that meeting as a regular meeting, because I would guess it's not gonna take you very long to set the tax rate, and then, while you're here anyway, um, we can go over the default budget, and if you want the CIP.
Okay, all right, let's do that, but you be confident that it's gonna be any day?
Um.
I mean.
There, there's no other. It could be another two weeks, there's, there's really no way to know.
And so then they get, are, are we prepared or should we put it out like right away?
Yes, the office is, the office is ready, yes, it's just.
They are ready, okay.
It's gonna take, once, once we get the preliminary rate, the board needs to meet to set the actual rate, and then we need to, um, generate the warrant, and then tax bills can be sent out. And so then, um, we have mailways do that, and it takes them, they need three days lead time.
So they, but they have, they have, they need what?
They need three days lead time, so.
Three weeks. Um, so, but once, okay, so.
So once we get the.
You have thirty days to pay your tax bill.
Right, so it could possibly go into January, and we really, really, really don't want that to happen. But it is possible, it's happened before, and life will go on. It, it'll take about a week from the time we get a preliminary rate probably until the bills.
Get into our mail.
In the mail, depending on how each piece moves.
And you push them, and you push them, right? The volume and the volume?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we had all of our stuff in on time this year.
Well, not exactly on time, but not as late as it usually is.
We need to work on that, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some, some stuff that was required, it should have been instantly be able to supply by other departments.
It, it's, it's a struggle for everybody every year, but every year we get a little bit better, so. Yes, we should be better, and we'll get there.
Okay. All right, need anything else on A, we're all set there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Avatar contract.
It is in your folder, um, I went, um, underneath of, yep, um, it's printed on the yellow paper. They have negotiated back from their original proposed twelve days to, um, eleven days, it does have an increase. It's a one-year contract, you, um, there's no urgency in signing this. Um, it does inform the budget, and it's reflected in the budget. The one thing to note is that it, um, it's a one-year contract. I don't know that there would be necessarily any savings in locking in a multi-year contract, but typically with Avatar, we have the option of, um, a contract that ends in the revale year. And that way, you kind of lock in your revale amount, there is that benefit. Otherwise, potentially every year it goes up a little bit more, so.
How many days does it help you?
Um, we, we have eleven contract days.
Based on estimated twelve days on call as needed. Waiting it right in the contract.
Then she didn't correct it, what is the, is that what the signature page says?
That's the, that's part of the agreement.
What is the sign, I wonder if she didn't change it in all the areas.
It's here, it's not days.
Oh, because. It's here. Based on eleven days, so.
We cross it off and, or?
Um, I, I would say you can certainly cross it off and initial it to be eleven days, and if she has a problem with that, then she can reissue it.
Okay.
But, you know, more to the point, on the signature page that you're checking the box, it says eleven days, so. Yeah, I would, I would, I can also ask for that revision if it makes you feel better, because there isn't any.
Well, it's not, it's not a signature page anyway, and the signature page is calling out for eleven days, so.
But I will call our attention to it, but I would cross it out though, and write eleven, just because.
And it says here in the eleven, eleven days. You need, two out of seven is the one that is showing twelve.
Got it, thank you.
So, what is our, and everything else is.
Is the same.
It's the same, are you all set with signing this? I changed it to be eleven days, because I think they just missed one.
Yeah.
So, do we need to pick up a run and then sign it?
If you're ready to do so.
If you guys are ready to do it, okay, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to be, accept the Avatar one-year contract for eleven days of service.
Second.
For, is there a dollar on it?
Yep.
There is.
Six thousand, forty-eight dollars.
Second, okay, um, all those in favor say aye, 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 okay. I think we all have to sign it, right?
At least a quorum, I think.
We can all sign it. So we have to checkmark that box that's above there?
I'm not sure why, because there's not really any other options, sometimes there are other options, but.
To make sure.
Do you like me?
All right, department head meetings.
This you and I talked about, and you wanted on the agenda, the idea of regular, whether it be monthly or quarterly meetings of department heads. Um, it's something that I can do with them, um, and, and with or without a board member, if one of you, sorry, wants to, um, join me, but an opportunity for the department heads to talk about what's going on with them, and for them to stay more in touch with.
Each other.
Each other and what's going on.
You started this, and then it kind of fizzled.
And then it felt, and it fizzled.
Well, I think only Mike only was the only one that did it, he, he met with the department heads. It's really more about having the department heads get together to talk, and maybe just having either you or, or one of us coming in and having like, kind of keeping it going, sort of, I mean.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure that they're all communicating for sure, together.
Yes.
Especially public safety.
I mean, I think a lot of good things came out of, it was one meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I think we need to keep it going.
Monthly, or quarterly, or something else?
Maybe quarterly.
Yeah, monthly might be a.
Unless, of course, a situation comes up.
It could help, yeah.
Then once, if we know of something that's turned into, was a problem that we could certainly need sooner. Do you, do you think we should, as the board, do it, or as a representative in the board doing it? Or do you feel that you should do it?
I feel as though I should be there.
Of course.
I would not, um, discount the value of having one of you present, just because it helps you all understand what they're doing and what's going on, and what they've had to deal with. So, um, I would say, you know, we can try to schedule it for a time that is likely to work with one of you, and you can either make it or not make it, and we'll just carry on and hope that you can.
The thing, the only thing is that, you know, Mark is the only one that's not a full-time employee of the town, and, and works in another position, so the likelihood of.
Yeah.
Him being part of something is less likely, unless it's in the evening, and then, then you got the other ones that have to come back. So I'm not sure how that, how well that works.
I can talk to him about it and see if there's a day of the week, or, you know.
That's better for him.
Right, or maybe if there's an afternoon, and do it in an afternoon at least.
A late afternoon or something of that sort, you know, and of course, like I said, the other ones are on the, well, I'm not sure what Bob's schedule is, but, you know, we can just, yeah, I mean, I, I don't mind stepping in and being part of it as well. With notice, I can have time, uh, during the day too, if it works out for everyone.
Well, the other thing is, I can just, I can put it on the board's calendar, and you can come or not come, and let me know if you think you can make it, and if it turns out to be more than, to, you know, more than one of you.
And then we have to post it as a meeting.
Then, yeah.
But it could be a non-public meeting, doesn't have to.
Depending on the content of the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, let's, let's do that, let's, I want to kind of.
I'll gauge it and find the time, yeah.
Fill Mark out, yeah, and it's not something we have to, we can talk about it again at the next meeting too, so it's, you know, when you, when you talk to Mark again, and then, like I say, the other two are employees, so they're here anyway, so. Okay, sounds good. Recreation.
You just wanted to keep it on the agenda, just.
I do, so, but no, no news is, no different updates on that.
Correct.
Okay, all right, um, so, ZBA appointments, Sheila, Sheila Riley?
So. I don't have any question about appointing her.
I, so I, the notice just went out, we have at least two openings.
Oh, okay.
But separately from the notice going out, um, she did mention that she would be willing to serve, and where she's served for a number of years on the planning board, she would be good to have, because she has the right background knowledge. So I'm suggesting that the board appoint her while, because there is an upcoming case, while we wait to see if we can get more public interest from the notice.
All right.
I'll move that we appoint Sheila Riley to the zoning board of Jazmin's.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye, aye, okay. Tuesday night town hall hours, this is to say whether or not we want to make it official.
Yeah.
Because the notice had gone out that it was only gonna go till December thirty-first.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I've heard nothing but positive about it, and I think that they are feeling good about it as well. So I'd like to see it stay that way.
Yep, I think it's an easy, easy win.
All right, so consensus that we're gonna go forward, all right?
Very good.
All right, very good. Tax rate status, we've already done that, um, space needs, we're waiting for more information, so we will be doing it sometime down the road. All right, transfer station ordinance, um, can we do them all, or should we do them separately?
Um, I would do them separately, but I just wanna reiterate that with the transfer station ordinance, it would be helpful to know that you, um, you agree with the final language as proposed, um, so that we know what we're carrying forward to the next public hearing, but that you should have another public hearing closer to March, so that, because it's gonna be on the ballot.
Okay.
Um, we would want people to be more familiar, I, familiar at the time when they're voting.
So how does this end up on the ballot, like, is it?
It's kind of like, um, one of the zoning ordinance revisions.
But it's not twelve pages of.
No, no, just like zoning. No, no, just like zoning ordinance revisions aren't really either. So it's just a warrant article that says, this is the gist of the change, and then at both the deliberative session and the voting day,
Good.
um, we have copies available so that people can reference those if they want to.
Okay.
And it will also be on the website, so when we put out all the information, like the annual report and all the other, the budget and everything else for people to reference, it will be one of those things.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have any, I read through it, and I didn't have any, then the.
I didn't either. All right, it looks great, yep. All right, so we'll accept all the proposed changes and proceed to go forward with that.
Okay, then you will have, I will give you new copies of, of the two traffic ordinances you can sign, and they can be effective at any time.
Okay.
I will give you, I will print out for you non-redline versions.
So we can, so we can sign it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so this one we can sign, the traffic. Now, do we have to accept them?
Um, you, you. Accept the, accept, accept the proposed revisions, yes, and then you can sign them. You can even authorize yourselves to sign them outside of a meeting, since you've agreed on the revisions. But I would have you sign a, a clean copy without the redline.
Okay. I guess my, my only, the only thing I wanted to say, pointing out, I do not believe that we should have Garo without two different speeds. That is my definitely, my only.
I mean, I understand what people are saying, the past Sligo is kind of wide open. People are going to speed anyway, they're going to go faster on that stretch anyway.
Yeah.
Um, but trying to police two different speed limits.
Well, then if they're starting fast, and when they're heading upwards in neighborhood, then are they going to slow down? No. So, you know, I just think we should be consistent on that whole.
That's the wording that's it, that's in the, occurring, sounds great.
Yeah.
So I would just. So, okay, and, and then, okay, so we should accept them, and then we can sign them when we come into the office?
At any time when you're in, and I can catch whoever hasn't signed at the next meeting.
Okay, so the travel restriction fourteen dash zero zero two, is there any complaints on us?
No.
Or suggestions, okay.
Yeah.
So make a, here a motion to accept it as presented.
Uh, so moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can go forward with that. Ordinance number oh-five dash oh-one.
I, I move we accept ordinance oh-five dash oh-one as presented.
Okay. Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed. Here, where's my third one? Oh, the third one exists, but we're just accepting it as.
Um, just to accept the language to move forward to the next public hearing.
Okay, so on the, uh, transfer station, ninety-three dash one.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move we accept the language to move forward to the next public hearing.
Okay, second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so all three of those are done.
Excellent, thank you.
And then, once you've all, we can go ahead and come in and just sign them all at the same time. Thank you. Oops, we'll do much.
Shoot after these pews. Just one demonstration.
All right, then go ahead and, what do you got?
Uh, transfer station stickers. Purchase order one seven nine six, amount of four hundred and ten dollars, twenty-three cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we've got, I move purchase order one seven seven six to Label Computing Services for IT support for ten hours at the amount of seven hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It's expensive. Throwback Brewery wants to go to the Winter Farmers Market. They really want an answer. Very contentious.
Yeah, well, yes, so.
Oh, was it really contentious?
Well, no, what's, what's contentious is that they've been held up because the board's now meeting every other week, and this was not in your folder last week, because I wasn't here to get it in your folder, so.
Why do they, why do we need to get some pressure?
It's only because it's alcohol.
Yep.
Oh, they're going to serve alcohol, they're going to serve.
But it's in Somersworth.
No.
No, it's in Walworth.
Walworth Greenhouse is in Rollinsford?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. I love that. I go to those, those farmers religiously. I thought it was Somersworth.
Nope.
No, that's Rollins. Whatever.
That, that whole road, the traffic light at Oak Street, all the way until.
Past Janko.
Past Janko, like another quarter of a mile after Janko.
Cool. Okay, cool. I move that we allow Throwback Brewery to participate in the Winter Farmers Market, Walworth Greenhouses.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I used to hate the Winter Farmers Market, because they were.
The traffic is so bad.
Yeah, you still live right there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
It's terrible.
Mm-hmm. Okay. This is, uh, this is, Dear Gail, this is a letter to Tocailan Saint-Hilaré to approve the Saint Mary Church Fair that Saint Anne's Field will hold on November twenty-third, twenty nineteen at the American Legion Hall on Foundry Street. I move that we approve Saint Mary Church Fair.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Um, purchase order one seven nine four, two mailways for the tax collector for postage, for property tax and newsletter mailing in the amount of four hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll run my second then.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I printed one of those for you, and just wanted to bring it out, so that you could also compete, but you don't really have to, you can wait if you want to.
Oh, sure, no, I want, I want that.
It's somewhere in your pile of stuff when you set that.
Um, and then request for dispersment for select board for miles in in the amount of one thousand, and for nationals in the amount of twelve hundred, and for me, in the amount of one thousand.
Do you need to, uh, I'll, I'll second that.
I don't, I don't, you see, there's a need to break them up. You can break them up, I don't think you need to, when they're all prepared, you can just elect to disperse them all.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I would say that not to sign your own.
I can't send my own.
Yeah.
Eleven ninety-nine.
What's that?
It's late and I'm punchy, and the time change isn't helping.
I didn't know what the time change.
I woke up in the morning and act, just like, you know, whatever.
But I still wake up at the same time. Like the dogs don't know that time's changing.
Sure, like I didn't even know it was coming. So I didn't complain about it.
Paul's getting given.
And I play this game, so it's almost ten.
Okay, so what did, has there any good action done to give us a price on your computer?
I'll play this game probably in a half for ten minutes.
Time administrator update, that.
Oh, sorry, did I miss you?
Time administrator. Yeah, you didn't get that far.
Okay, I get that far, all right.
Um, you want to go first with your board updates?
Board updates. I have budget Wednesday. I think that's all I have, that's going to be the long one, yeah, I think that's all I have. Spin to the water regularly. Yep, that's all I have.
And the water meeting was contentious, I assume, for the hearing?
Of course, yeah.
I, I didn't have anything, I am planning to attend Wednesday for budget, but at six or.
Six, six or eight.
Third.
I have nothing. Um, the next water meeting is on the twentieth, I guess, so, why meeting on the twentieth?
It's on the twi, it's a Thursday, right?
Yes.
Why is it so far away?
They were just having conflicts.
Deerfield there, I guess.
So you're attending as a resident, not as a person?
Not the twentieth.
Yes, it's a resident.
Isn't it the twenty-first?
Twenty-first is the Thursday.
Yeah, I, I don't think that they have, when is it? Do you remember? It's on.
I've read it down.
I don't think it was on the Wednesday.
No, Thursday.
It's the Thursday, so I think it's the twenty-first.
Yes, because they couldn't, because of budget.
Budget's the twentieth.
That's right, that's right, that's why they couldn't do it, so.
Is it six, everything?
Six thirty.
Late six thirty.
Leaving. All right. Okay, where else are we? Okay, so town administrator update.
So, um, I have requested a quote for a laptop.
Okay.
I haven't gotten it yet. I was going to do a purchase order anyway, because I could probably approximate the cost, but I want to, since I don't have a quote, I'm going to take the time to do the rebudgeting, because I just want to see where we're at with things and see where there's funding or not funding. But I'll, I'll, I'll prepare a purchase order next time the board meets. I wanted to let you all know that the historical committee, there's a marker in a park that they are proposing to have cleaned with their fund. So I'm looking into how that process is going to work for getting those funds dispersed, they're held up the trustees. But they do now have their own fund that was authorized by, I think it was the eighteen town meeting. So that's going on. There was an unfortunate event at the library today.
The flooding?
The flooding. There, there was a sewer backup in, um, in upper floor of restrooms above the library. And so sewage is going down the wall and dripping on the new carpeting.
Oh, no.
And they've lost art supplies. It's in the, it's in the back room, it's in the community meeting room, and it's in the library itself, here and there. It did get shut off finally, but it went on for a good part of the day. It wasn't, um, it was a steady trickle, it wasn't, you know, a steady gushing.
Is the mail going to have to pay for the repairs?
That part is not clear, but there will be a deductible with Primex, but Primex will. The, the good news about the carpeting is that they're tiles, so you don't have to replace the whole carpet, you can replace just the parts that are affected. But they're likely to be closed for the week.
Yeah.
They have not officially decided that. The library director is away on vacation this week, so the trustees are stepping in and trying to manage things. Servpro's coming tomorrow. I don't know if that means that they'll be up and running by Wednesday or not, I don't know, so.
They'll, Servpro will leave their fans in for, I've had to call them twice, and they'll leave their fans in probably for three days. And they're, you can't have a library open when the fans are there.
Yeah, so I think they're closed for the week, but.
Just when you think, I mean, it was gorgeous. I was there last Monday for the conservation, it's just gorgeous.
It's so wonderful to have a carpet that's for yoga.
I know, I know.
Oh, my god.
All right, well, just keep that data.
Yeah. That's all I have.
No, what is, what's this status on George's computer that he asked for?
That is in your folder and you can act on it at any time.
So, we had a discussion when you weren't here, that if you get a laptop as your primary device, can your computer go to George?
And we'll hook, we'll get you a display connection?
Yeah, well.
That's an interesting idea. I'd like to talk to Tom about how that might work and how functional it might be.
I mean, the. The only device I have for my work is a laptop, and it's, you, you know, you got to make sure it's robust enough to handle.
Sure.
I mean.
Well, and, and I would want to quote it appropriately to make sure that it could, you know, so, but that's an interesting thought, that's possible.
Because it'll kill two birds with one stone.
But then it would be a desktop, not a, not a laptop. Yours is a desktop.
For George.
Yeah, for George, right.
Well, right, right, so, let's talk to George about the functionality of that too. But I don't think he would have a problem with that, because I don't think he was necessarily looking for a laptop. Yeah, I think the quote.
I think he's requesting a desktop.
Yeah, I think he was requesting a desktop.
Oh, he was, okay, I thought it was a laptop.
That's what they, well, they have now.
Well, they have those little tab, well, yeah, well, Ted has a nice great thing, well, now George has this little.
It's kind of funny.
It's kind of, yeah, it's kind of funny, yeah.
Okay, so thank you for the thought. I will look into it and talk to Tom about it, and I'll plan a PO accordingly, and we'll see.
All right. That is? Okay, community input.
I just had a question on road closures. I'm Michael Point with Director of Fleet for C and J. Uh, I've been told it's not going to affect our operations.
The road closures or the restrictions?
Restrictions, right.
It will not affect you.
It will not affect you, and it did not, oh, you weren't here when Bob was talking about it, yeah. If any business that, what it will, it'll affect you a little bit, but you won't be able to take shortcuts, you, direct route out. So instead of going like down Foundry or something, you'll have to go out onto Route Four.
One of the things that had come up in the meeting, if the tree goes down, I can't go down Roberts Road, then I will have to go down.
Yeah. Oh, of course, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I have to go down, I, we use church.
Yeah. Yeah.
And other than that, we don't go down the back road, so obviously, it's a forty-five foot long bus.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's one of those things, we pay a lot of money for registrations in town. And I know money goes towards repairing roads, so, for, and, and they're not loaded when they leave here. So they're under a certain weight.
Yes.
It's not like a dump truck. I didn't know if you were.
The weight threshold is, it's twenty-six thousand pounds.
Okay, you know, we're thirty-seven.
So it's still over.
But, but there's no restriction to maintain running your business as.
No, any, anyone on that road will still have full access to the road.
So if I go out church or, yeah, I, we don't normally use Foundry, but at certain times, like when you have the lawn freight trains.
Yeah.
We prefer to go straight across on that shot piece and then turn on Main Street, but sometimes I have to go down church.
Yeah, okay.
And there's been blockages or issues going down Upper Main Street towards the fire station.
Yeah.
And occasionally I'll have to take Foundry, but that's not a preferred route.
Okay, okay, that's all they were saying, is that, you know, trying to stay off of the smaller roads and, and staying on the main roads.
We don't want them anyways.
Yeah.
I don't want to be there, but I don't want to run into a problem because we're using those.
No, because you're using them because there's problems that you can't run into, so that is not, that is not a question at all. No, none of the businesses in Rollinsford are going to be impacted by this ordinance. It's more about businesses that come in or taking shortcuts, you know, the GPS reroutes a lot of these people down Silver and, and, you know, to make it a shorter trip, someone outside of Rollinsford, you know, a shorter trip. And so we're seeing a lot of heavy trucks, dump trucks, and, you know.
I think you're going to have issues on Silver, because they come across from Somersworth, that's the only bridge.
Well, Silver's a.
So they still have to go.
Silver's a straight road, but, but it still has a lot of heavy trucks, I mean, traffic trail is now which I've never seen before.
Right.
Now they're being rerouted by GPS and going down certain roads. That's kind of what we're trying to stop happening, but as Chief Duchesne said, it does not impact our businesses in our town to do their business. Absolutely does not, okay? Yep, no, we definitely would support you guys doing whatever you have to do to get your job done, and, you know, he's just saying main roads as much as you can, but when it impairs you, then you, you do what you have to do, because you have to get out. Yeah, okay, you can get that clarified with Chief Duchesne too, as well, but that was. So that's how it was presented to us as well.
Thank you, Mike, for letting Cemetery know they have a meeting Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay. Have a good night, thank you.
Yeah, we let, we let him know so that he let Mike, Mark know about Cemetery Wednesday night, because he didn't know about it, and we let Bob.
I was talking to Bob, says, see you Wednesday night, he says, why?
Bob Duchesne?
Yeah, he didn't know about it.
Well, he got an email, so whether or not he's reading his emails, because I got a copy of the email.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying that we just mentioned it up in the hallway.
Okay.
So has the budget gone out?
Excuse me?
Has the budget gone out for Wednesday?
No.
No.
Okay.
We have determined how. We have to determine how that's going to.
You want to talk about that before?
Yeah, we should need to talk about that because, I mean, I know that they normally do their own, they bring their own.
Let's back up for these two.
Oh, well. Budget Committee wants to have copies of the budgets that are going to be presented. Generally speaking, Chief Duchan, Chief Rutherford have their own budgets and have copies with them or documentation with them, so Cemetery doesn't usually, so do we send out?
He does, because we just have a line, so he has his whatever.
Yeah, but he doesn't give copies to everyone generally, I don't believe. But anyway, do we send out just the, the budget through the whole town budget and then?
Do you want to send the whole town budget spreadsheet that you've approved? Since they're going to see it anyway, they can start thinking about everything and see the big picture. Or do you want to send the snapshots of the separate departments?
I don't send the whole budget, it's been.
Because that's what they have, that's what it's going to go forward with, so, so that's what we're going to do.
I don't have any hesitation, so there.
Does it go?
Yeah, it sounds based on the.
All right, so just note the town budget with their budgets in it.
Okay.
You click.
And then they may or may not supply their own.
That's their, I mean, that's, but, but we haven't, we haven't changed anything.
They received that email, so they have that opportunity to.
They were on distribution, the only one that, it might have been, Bob's email might have not have been the right email.
He uses two different emails.
He uses two different email and he doesn't check it all the time.
So, but now he knows, so he might still be there. But I know Mark was on it, because I saw it and, so we'll, we'll send it forward and they'll have at least what we're, do I say you'll send that out in the morning? Okay. And then they can bring their own documentation and pass out if they make the copies.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
We need to move to go into non-public for welfare, RSA 91-13, Roman number two, letter C.
Yeah, exactly, roll call, yes, yes, miles?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then the meeting will adjourn right afterwards, so. Hold it if you want, but that's, we'll get you then, the date and time, so you get yourself.